Hi, everybody. I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M. And just for the record, we have on the call with us, Brenda Penn Williams, Samuel Pride, Peter Halliday, and Lunez Constant, who are the commissioners on the Fair Rent Commission. And then we have Carlos, our staff, our Fair Rent Coordinator from the city. I believe that's everybody who's joined today. Um, I'm going to share my screen with the agenda and the packet that was sent out by Carlos earlier today. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of, second item, I guess, technically, is the approval of last month's meeting. Minutes. Um, anybody have, everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Or if you haven't, we can read it now as we go through it. Does anyone have any corrections on the first page? One correction that I'd like to make is Peter Halliday is H A L L A D A Y, not H A L L I D A Y. So if that change could be made throughout. Does anyone have any other corrections? Any changes on page two? Any changes on page three? Any changes on page four? All right, hearing no other changes, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept.
Any seconds? Brenda, Lunez?
It looks like they locked off for no, for some reason, maybe they're trying to get back in.
I'm showing them still here, but.
Yes, I see Brenda on and Lunez on.
Sam, we're waiting on a second for approval of the minutes last week's, last month's meeting.
Samuel Pride, I approve the minutes for last month's meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had to step, I had to step away for a minute, I had to see my mother.
No, no worries. Thank you. Thanks, Brenda. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? We do, if everybody is sitting in their chairs, we have, we have five, five commissioners and who are present. Mr. Pride, Ms. Constant, Mr. Halliday, yourself and me. So that's quorum. All right. So moving on to the next item is the chair's report. First of all, I appreciate everybody joining today. I know that it's a different night than we usually have our meeting. I appreciate everybody being willing to postpone the meeting for a week, given the July Fourth holiday, and that this was immediately following it. I especially appreciate it since it meant that I got to go see the fireworks with my family, since they were postponed to Wednesday. So it was great that we didn't have the meeting, we got to participate in that. Personally, that's one of my favorite Norwalk wide events of the year. I love the the whole community that gathers for that. It's wonderful. Um, I wanted to highlight a couple of items that I've been observing kind of in the Norwalk community, which is there's been a lot of talk about the need for affordable housing and how we get affordable housing and, and whether more housing should be built and whether that would increase the availability of affordable housing or would just increase the availability of unaffordable housing, for lack of a better term. And um, I'm not going to take a side necessarily in, in this, but I wanted to raise it because I do think it's something that bears very close to the commission's heart, which is the need for families that live in Norwalk to have the opportunity to continue to be able to live in Norwalk. And as the lack of housing becomes clear, the lack of housing to support the number of residents in Norwalk becomes clear. And as the price of housing, both rental housing, which is what immediately concerns us, as well as home ownership continues to escalate, um, that creates a lot of pressure on people whose rents might become, you know, who might have a current apartment, but whose rents might be coming up for renewal, and it creates a lot of pressure on, on them from landlords to raise the rent and on them to have to see whether or not where they would go if they, if they can't afford the new rent, right? Um, and that I think is a central core reason for our purpose is, yes, the market needs to be able to be the market and we need to kind of let the market take its course. But we also need to have a place where if someone is having their rent raised unconscionably high, a place where they can go and appeal that and, and have their have their voice heard. Um, so I want to just have everybody keep that in mind. That's something that I think we're going to continue to see a lot of in this current rental environment and housing environment.
John, I have really, I have a concern about the lack of affordable housing in Norwalk. I really have a big concern about that. And all of these buildings been put up and only getting ten percent for affordable is ridiculous to me. And I think the city should take a good look at that and stop caving in to all these developers that come here. I, I, I just don't like it. And we, we, we're pushing folks out of Norwalk, especially people that look like me.
I, I, I understand that concern, Brenda, and I, I think that it's very accurate that there is a significant problem with the lack of affordable housing in Norwalk. And, and I know that there are various attempts to try to address it, but as far as I'm concerned, none of them have really have really hit the need that we, the, the crisis, I think, that we have right now in Norwalk. So I appreciate your raising that. Um, I do think that there's, there's some things that we have control over within this commission. Um, and to the extent that we can make, make it known that A, if you're getting a significant rental increase and you, you don't find it to be affordable, you find it to be kind of out of control, we are a place that you can go and appeal that and, and have some, some comfort that you won't be driven out in the, in the short term. Um, with that, I will turn it over unless there was anyone else who wanted to comment on that. Yeah.
You know, John, I, I, I think Norwalk needs to do like Danbury. This is my understanding. If a developer comes into Danbury and wants to build an apartment building, they have to donate money to the school system or to some organization in Danbury. I think Norwalk needs to do the same thing. And we need to get this rent under control. Because what some people are paying for rent is my mortgage for two months. That's ridiculous.
I think it's very true. That's why I raised it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Carlos to give the coordinators report.
Good evening, everyone, and apologies for the technical difficulties. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So since I started back in late November, I've been able to assist over two hundred and eighty families. Uh, there's been a, an increase in traffic uh, in the Fair Rent Coordinator's office over the last month. In the last thirty days, I was able to see and assist over forty plus families. Uh, it seems like the summertime is the renewal season because a lot of these property management companies are requesting sixty days in advance for this tenants to renew. I've had some tenants who come over and tell me, well, I really don't want to renew, I want to move. And if I tell them that I'll be moving in sixty days and I'm not able to find something in sixty days, then I'm put in a bad situation. Sometimes they're forced to renew because uh, you know, the rental market, it's a little difficult for for tenants. Uh, I obviously, I try to explain to them the rights, the responsibilities of the tenants and the landlords, and I, I try to explain to them how to go about securing uh, housing, especially in this difficult market. And that's all I have for the coordinator's report.
Thank you, Carlos. We now turn it over to Attorney Liskov for the review, discussion, and motions on open cases. I'll scroll down to that.
Good evening, everybody. Russell Liskov. We'll go over the open cases to begin with. Uh, the first case is forty-seven Lexington Avenue. Uh, this, this is the basement apartment case. Uh, we've been monitoring it. Um, they have, the tenant has his own lawyer. Um, not only is he fighting the eviction, he's also suing the landlord for the things the landlord has done to him. Uh, there's a trial date now on that set for July twenty-fifth. Um, the plaintiff is represented by Attorney Heisler. I, I saw him in court on another matter, and we spoke about it, and he knows there's a fair rent complaint pending, and he said, thank you, and he asked me to tell the court, to tell the board if he would take no action at this time. He would appreciate, and we also recommend you take no action on it this time. We'll see what happens as a result of what the court, the court does.
Samuel Pride, no action taken?
Brenda Penn Williams, second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Brenda, was that an aye for opposed or aye for in favor?
Oh, favor.
Thank you. Any extensions? Thanks. No action on eighteen twenty-one, twenty-three. Uh, ideally, we'll have an update at the next meeting.
I think hopefully it'll go away at the next meeting. I have a feeling it'll come to a resolution.
Bye. Thank you.
Can you scroll up a little? There we go. The next one is eighteen twenty-three dash twenty-three Loomis Street. The landlord wanted an increase of nineteen fifty to twenty-four forty-one. Um, we wound up be able to enter into an agreement between the landlord and the tenant. Um, they, they've entered into a new year-long lease. Um, the complaint was withdrawn, and the withdrawal form was filed by the tenant, so I recommend that we close the case.
Samuel Pride, close the case.
Brenda Penn Williams, second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion passes.
The next case is eighteen twenty-four dash twenty-one Glover Avenue. Property Management wants an increase from twenty-five hundred and seventy to three thousand fifteen uh, dollars a month. Um, the, the obviously, the, the tenant is filing the complaint. Uh, we've had numerous conversations with the attempts to talk to the landlord. They've told us they're going to be represented by an attorney. We've called that attorney. They have not returned our telephone call. I would, I don't know what this, this commission has done in the past, but I would like to send them out a letter telling them if they don't respond to our actions, that we are going to default that and rule in favor of the, the tenant. Has the commission ever done that before, or you just set it down for a hearing?
We set it down for a hearing.
All right. So at this point in time, I just, for this one month, I'll recommend no action. If we don't get anything back from the attorneys, it's called the landlord law, law firm. If they don't, if they don't respond, if they don't respond next month, then I'll, I'll recommend that we set it down for a hearing. So I write this month, we get one, nothing's happening to the tenant, the tenant is happy, no one's bothering the tenant. They're not being harassed or intimidated or threatened. So if we go one more month, I recommend I take no action this month, and next month, we'll do what we need to do.
But, okay, so if we, we haven't heard from them, so how would you get them to come to a hearing?
If they don't come to a hearing, they lose.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, the tenant would present.
The Fairing Commission would consider the facts and, and the, and the standards and, and decide, but it would be very difficult for the landlord to support the, the rental increase if they're not there to present their side of the case.
Correct. I mean, it's kind of a fait accompli, you know, show up, you, you lose. I mean, that's, you know, that's why I was wondering if the board ever just defaulted them for failing to cooperate without having a hearing on it.
I think we need a hearing technically. I don't think that we have the ability to default it.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
So why don't we go and just vote on a hearing? If they haven't, how many times have?
We've already, we've already voted to hear the case. That technically means that we've, we've said that we could have scheduled a hearing at any point in time. Um, I'll defer to the staff on whether or not they think that scheduling a hearing sooner would be more, more effective at getting a response, or whether we should wait another month before doing.
That's what we should do.
Okay, I mean, this complaint came in in May, so you're only talking, you're talking sixty days out, which is not a tremendous amount of time. But, uh, you know, we said, the complaint was filed May eleventh.
It would be one thing if they were negotiating.
Oh, I agree with you.
If they're not negotiating or willing to come forward and talk to us, we just need to set a hearing date and get this done.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, then let's set a hearing date for our next meeting. Our next, our August meeting would be the hearing date. Um, and then if they start negotiating, we can postpone it. You know, if they're in negotiations, and you, I'll leave it to you guys to let us know if that's going to go on or not.
So I'll change my recommendation. I recommend that you set it down for a hearing day, uh, the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think the vote is still no action. There's no but, but for the staff, your, your role would then be to Carlos, schedule a hearing.
And you, and you want the hearing on the night of the board meeting?
Our, our hearings are usually the night of our, our meetings, yes.
Okay, and are we going to do them in person or are we doing it via Zoom?
Damn pride. I'm okay with doing it in person.
I'm okay doing it by Zoom.
Either way, it's fine with me.
We haven't yet done a hearing by Zoom. I think that if the capabilities, the technology allows for that, then that's what we should do. If not, let's see if we can get a quorum in person. But.
Carl, Carlos, you'll have to call the tenant to make sure that they're able to do a, do a Zoom meeting, that they have the technology to get in with a computer to do the Zoom meeting, okay? Carlos, you there?
Yes, will do.
Okay, beautiful.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, they, the pressure of the hearing brings them to the table, and then we can have a conversation, but if they're not going to converse, then we should just have the hearing. I agree.
And Carlos, Carlos and I will get a letter out to the landlord and the tenant telling them they're set down for a hearing for, for the August meeting and, you know, hopefully that'll bring them out of the woodwork, right?
Yeah, um, just for your awareness, typically, because hearings tend to take a while, we schedule it for an earlier time, usually six o'clock.
So you'll do your board meeting first and then the hearing after that?
Yeah, that's usually how we make it work, um, depending on the availability of, and of the timeliness of the tenant and landlord, we might just do the call to order first and, and review of minutes and then kick into the hearing and then go back to the rest of our meeting after the hearing completes.
Okay. So, so for that matter.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor for taking no action, but we have instructions to schedule the hearing. Um, let's take a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Brenda?
I couldn't get my thing on.
Thank you. All opposed? All right, and I think we got everybody, so no extensions either. Thank you. We'll go on to the next case.
The next one is five fifteen, uh, West Avenue Apartment three thirty-nine. They're requesting a rental increase from twenty-six sixty a month to twenty-eight seventy-nine. Um, we have been actively working and negotiating this case. Um, we, we, there's, there's an air conditioning issue going on. Uh, we are very, we are very close to a settlement. I think next month it will bear fruit and the case will go away. So I recommend take no action. I'm ninety-five percent sure next month this case will be withdrawn.
The kitty got sick.
Damn second.
I don't think the first was actually a motion, so.
Oh. So moved.
All right, thanks, Brenda, and then Sam, I got your second.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. No action on case eighteen twenty-five dash twenty-three. That completes, I believe, our open cases. And we will move on now to new cases.
Yes, we, as Carlos said, we are getting busy. Um, I was with Carlos for a while today, and as we predicted, the new complaints are coming in, and we think they're going to keep on coming in, and this commission will get very busy over the next several months. The next case is eighteen twenty-six dash twenty-three. This complaint was filed on about June fourteenth. It's regarding one oh six West Cedar Street Apartment two oh three. The management company wants an increase from sixteen thirty-eight to nineteen fifty a month. Uh, we spoke into the landlord, we spoke into the tenant, we sent out, we're negotiating it. We recommend that we hear the case as it clearly falls within the jurisdiction of the Fair Rent Commission.
Sam, I recommend hearing the case.
Second, second, okay. I second it.
I think I got Lunez got the second and first, I think. Thanks, Lunez. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, next case.
The next case is eighteen twenty-seven dash twenty-three fifteen West Main Street Apartment J one oh two. Um, they want a rental increase from two thousand to twenty-three fifty. Obviously, the tenant says it's too high. Uh, we sent out emails to everybody, we spoke to the tenant, we spoke to the landlord, and we're seeing if we can get to a number that people can live with as opposed to what the offer is. Once again, this case clearly falls within the jurisdiction of the Fair Rent Commission, and we recommend, well, I, I think we have to recommend, Carlos, I think it says take no action. I, we should recommend to hear that, we should recommend that we hear the case.
I agree.
I agree, Samuel. I second it.
And Carlos, you'll modify that to say we recommend that we hear the case, okay?
Correct. All right, any discussion? Uh, in the interest of full disclosure, my brother used to be the property manager for this property. He no longer is and, and was not involved in this rental increase. But I will recuse myself if anyone thinks that would be a conflict of interest. Um, I don't think it is personally, but I understand that because of my brother's relationship with the property, that might be, there might be cause for concern amongst others, so.
I don't think that's a concern because seeing that he no longer works for the property, but he still may have a relationship with the people that work there, but what we do stays between us.
It was sold, it was sold to new ownership, and they brought in a new property manager, so he doesn't even have a relationship with the new, with the existing owners.
It wouldn't be a concern. To me, it would not be a concern. I don't know about other people.
I think, I think you're ethically fine so long as you can, you know, vote with a clear conscience and have no animus and have, and have, you know, an open mind when you hear everything.
I, I.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm just letting you people know.
Yeah, transparency. I see right through you.
All right, all in favor of, of hearing the case?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Right. Looks like we'll be hearing this one. Thank you.
Then the, the next one is two, eighteen twenty-eight dash twenty-three twenty-nine Main Avenue, Unit Three. Uh, once again, it's new property management's in there. Uh, the complaint was just filed on June twenty, June twenty-seventh, twenty-three. We notified the landlord. We've called the tenant, left a voicemail, and we, we, we'll, we'll begin negotiation. We recommend that we hear the case. It clearly falls within the ambit and purview of the Fair Rent Commission. Oh, I think we lost Sam.
No, I'm here. I just had to get up for a minute.
Okay.
What was, I forgot, what was the recommendation?
To hear the case.
I recommend we hear the case.
Second.
Yeah, the second from Peter. On, uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Sam. Any, any opposed? Any extensions? All right, we'll be hearing this one too. Great.
All right, the last one for the evening is eighteen twenty dash twenty-three forty-one Wolf Pit Avenue Apartment five K. Once again, these are all new property people. It's a two-bedroom apartment. The complaint was just filed on six thirty. Uh, all the notifications been sent out to the landlord. Uh, we've actually spoken to the property manager, uh, spoken to the tenant, and we're, we're starting negotiation. Here it says we recommend no action, but I, Carlos, I'll modify that. We recommend, we recommend that you hear the case. Once again, this is clearly within the ambit and purview of the, the Fair Rent Commission.
Dan, recommend to hear the case?
Second.
Come on, Brenda.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right.
Carlos and I'll be playing a lot of telephone tag negotiating these. I think, I think most of them we're going to be able to be resolved, and I think we'll make everybody happy. So, you know, people know they have to come to the middle somewhere, so.
We can, we can see the increase in work though, so, uh, I appreciate all the time that you're putting in to make that happen.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight, everybody.
Thank you.
We now have belief on the agenda. Oops. Sorry for that. Hold business, which is we passed around several dates in which we wanted to potentially schedule the Fair Rent Commission brunch. Did we finalize a day, date, time, et cetera?
Well, I, I know that I can't do a Sunday, so Sunday is here, so we're not going to do a Sunday. But if we can do it the twenty-fourth, I will set it up.
What are we planning on having today?
Uh, oh my God, uh, what's the name of the place?
Pin Stripes.
Pin Stripes. Oh my God, it just lost me.
Brenda, Brenda, the twenty-fourth or the twenty-third?
Twenty-third is a Sunday.
It's going to be on a Sunday.
Yeah, the twenty-third.
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 Is, is everybody available on the twenty-third? Is anybody available on the twenty-third?
I am.
I sent an email out, and I haven't gotten a lot of responses. I unfortunately will not be here that weekend.
Okay.
Hey, Brenda, can you pick me up?
The twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we have it because I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Well. You guess so? Okay.
Okay, the 23rd. So Carlos, could you please send out. Uh, correspondence regarding the 23rd and see how many people we have.
Okay, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just.
Go to sleep Brenda.
I just want to add one more thing that towards the end of the file, I attached the two complaint withdrawals that we spoke about last month.
Yes.
So you could take a look at it then, uh.
This is one that we already closed last month and this is one that we closed this week, I believe.
Yes.
Correct.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, do we have any new business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll give Peter the second.
A second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. We're going to be, we're going to be busy. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Take care. Night Carlos.
Have a good night, Russell.
You got it, buddy.
Damn.